All right, it's seven o'clock. I'm gonna call the regular meeting for selectmen order. First item of business is the vice of regents. Sarah?
Fundly, to divide for the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, all members of the board of selectmen are here in present. I've asked that we add as an agenda item our meeting minutes from the March.
Twenty first.
Yeah.
Twenty first.
March twenty first, regular meeting.
Move that we add under approval of meeting minutes, the approval of the March twenty first Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. For A, the April fourth Board of Selectmen public hearing minutes.
Move to approve the April, April fourth, twenty twenty four Board of Selectmen public hearing minutes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there, are there any corrections or is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I heard abstentions? I heard one in favor and one abstention. What do you guys?
I had an aye.
I forgot to say yes out loud.
It's that lag coming back. All right, so that's three, Sarah. On the April fourth Board of Selectmen regular meeting. Is there a motion?
I move to approve the April fourth, twenty twenty four Board of Selectmen regular meeting minutes.
Second.
Any discussion or corrections?
I have quite a few.
Okay.
On page three, the motion at the bottom to reconsider the Arts and Culture Committee for a commission in eighteen months. The correct motion is to renew the Arts and Culture Committee for a term of eighteen months. Page four, where it says first selectman Bowser asked Debbie Williams to resubmit the application for a commission after eighteen months. I believe it was that you asked the committee members to resubmit applications.
That was correct.
Okay. Page five. Under discuss and approve the twenty twenty four Senior Farmers Market Nutrition Program. It said that a card in the amount of twenty four dollars would be issued, but that was last year's dollar amount. I just didn't want people to get confused because it's actually fifty dollars this year. So it should, it shouldn't say that a card in the amount of twenty four would be issued. It should say that that was previously issued last year.
Okay.
And page six, with all the congressionally directed spending, I'm listed as making motions in all of these. Which I don't believe we did. We actually, you actually went down yes or no. And I'm, I'm listed for making motions for ones that I didn't vote for, so. I don't believe I would make a motion if I didn't support it, so I don't know how you wanna go about that. Like number five, I was opposed, but it shows that I moved the motion, which I didn't. Same with number six and number eight.
If I didn't write it that way, then it was just a consideration, but then you voted, so I didn't know what format you wanted me to come up with.
Yeah, I, I realize now that that probably would have been confusing for you.
Yeah.
Because if I didn't support the motion, I wouldn't make the motion.
I'd like to go back and, and review the video of that to see if there's an easier way to clarify that.
Okay. So do you want to suppose? And, oh, and then I have another one, which I don't know Keith may wanna speak to. But the motion at the end that he made after executive session, there was some more verbiage that should be in that about checking our insurance carrier. Subject to the first selectmen checking, checking that our insurance carrier approves the changes should also be in there.
Was it at, at, after executive session?
Yes.
The video was very short.
I watched the whole video yesterday for all the corrections that I made here, so that was the motion being read.
That would be, I can make a correction on page twelve.
Let me, let me do the executive set now. Page twelve, which one? Oh, yes. Yes.
Should say, should say after the motion to approve a memorandum of understanding, it should say comma, subject to the first selectmen confirming. I think how we have it confirming, no issues with the town attorney.
No.
No, that's a curmish. Oh, curmash, sorry. Did I say like, is that sufficient to say no issues? Or Sarah, do you have more?
I watched the video. It said to approve the memorandum of understanding between the Town of East Windsor and ASME Council for local one three zero dash one six six. Subject to the first selectmen checking that our insurance carrier approves the changes.
Thank you, Sarah.
You're welcome.
I ask for superseding motion to postpone approval of these.
So move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? What's the next one? Make a second.
March twenty first. Oh, you mean our next meeting. I'm sorry. Yeah, sorry.
Okay. Public participation.
You need us to, and we added the March twenty first. We needed to postpone that to the next meeting?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so I'll move to postpone the March twenty first regular Board of Selectmen meeting minutes until our next meeting.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Now we will move on to public participation. This is one of two opportunities for members of the public to address the board of selectmen. I'll first ask if there's anybody here in the room who would like to address the board and then provide the same opportunity to anybody who's online. Is there anybody here who would like to address the members of the board of selectmen? Yes, sir.
Now, ugly. Thanks, Gordon Rodrood. I have a curious question. Is Sarah the secretary of this room?
She's not.
Cause she finds the most discrepancies of, you know, I'm just kinda curious on that.
It's a possible between the ladies on the left, I think.
Yeah. She did the job this time around. But just curious about that. All right, so none of you are secretary, you just?
No. Salvo is the secretary.
All of them.
Is there any other public comments? Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Paul Anderson, eighty nine Main Street. Community center property in the Scout Hall lease. I never heard anything back about the trees that disappeared.
They were dead or dying and were.
Okay. And I had a phone call from a committee member today saying it looks like the expansion of the soccer fields has started. And I'm just telling you what I heard. I didn't say it true. I didn't go out and check, but appears that somebody's out cutting trees down in the area where the expansion's on the map. Now maybe put something else on. I'll look into it further.
I'll take it right out there tomorrow, but I was at it myself, but we're, we're doing no field work there.
The, 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 that I got from this committee member was, sounds like our relationship is deteriorating because we're not hearing about things. But then I don't know what really happened, so I just pointed out, maybe we don't have a problem.
I'm gonna stick by, nothing's happening.
Thank you.
Um.
I, it's okay. Okay, that's fine. I admit, didn't get a chance to see, so I like to see for myself as well. Okay, fair enough.
Any other public comment? Is there anybody online who would like to address the members of the board? All right, we'll have another opportunity later on. We have two new reappointments, or two, two reappointments. Richard Toller as a conservation commissioner and Donna Grant as a conservation commissioner. Both per terms expiring May first of twenty twenty eight. Is there a motion?
Make a motion, don't we accept the appointment of Richard Toller for term of five hundred and eighty point eight?
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So carried.
Hey, I'll move to reappoint Donna Grant to the Conservation Commission as a regular member for a term expiring May first, twenty twenty eight.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So carried. Okay. With last year was the first year that we had changed our paving contract from Galasso to Andrick Materials and Recycling. That agreement had a, a one-year extension provision included in it. One would like to execute that. We're expecting to have a million dollars worth of paving work done this year. And the roads that they have in mind at the moment are a, a reclamation of whopping road drainage and resurfacing of Bridal Path and some spots on Wells Road that are finalizing that project. Andrick was much more responsive than our previous vendors had been. They were cheaper than our previous vendors had been. And the request has been that this board consider executing the contract extension for the one additional week. Any questions?
I have a question.
Go ahead.
So, I mean, usually folks bid on work and then we get a contract through that bid work. And so the extension is for newer here.
It's, the scope will change and the scope consisting of simply the roads that we're going to do. So last year we provided them with five or six roads that were, were paved over. That was, that was what the bid went out for competitively.
Not for a bid price of, it's, it says total bid price, but it's not really a bid here. It's their estimate, one point three one eight million dollars. But I was, I thought it was a bid. I was looking for bid result, but I hear what you're saying, but a contract extension. But I, I would think that we want to bid out for one point three million dollar project. Because otherwise we could always just extend contracts. We could have contracts and extend contracts and continue to hire contractors to work without getting bids. So we maybe they're great, but it also deprives other businesses from the opportunity to work. So my preference would be to have it shipped out. I'm not sure necessarily if you're comfortable just on a contract extension agreeing to a price of one point three one eight million dollars without comparison with what other people were charging for the work. And then we could certainly use their, in my opinion, we would use their prior work as a basis for wanting to maybe select their bid, even if they were not the lowest, because we have experience with them, but I'm not sure if it's good practice to do this thing.
Yeah, I'm trying to find, trying to find the extension clause here. I'm not seeing. My concern with that is too full. First of all, there was the extension provision that was in here that allows us to do, can I just read your speed? It only allows for a one-year extension and that's what the, that's what Public Works is asking us to do. The, the second concern that I have is that were we to put this out to bid now on April eighteenth, we will not have any roads. Because the companies that do this are booked out. As it stands, we're just about on time for this. I think we're gonna miss the window for getting a company that would do the paving work, uh, cause the, the bid would be thirty to forty-five days after it was issued and it's not gonna be issued tomorrow. I, I think there would be a, a hindrance and a delay there that would stop us from seeing anything happen. I have no problem putting it out to bid next year. I think that the, the, as I read the language, it should be a one-time, one-year extension. I'm, I'm cool with that. And then we can bid it in January so that we get the construction season next year.
Yeah, I, I understand that and we wanna get the work done. I think that and I guess folks were relying on the fact that there was a one-year extension and they would just submit this for this question extension, but I just don't think it's good practice to do it this way. And it's a lot of money. So I hear what you're saying, but I, I personally, I'm just not confident I can support one point three, one point three one eight million dollars to work without getting. But I appreciate what you said.
So as far as I'm concerned, I'm okay with with an extension, but I wanna see actually what they're gonna get done, more detail on, on what they're doing this year rather than and I'm looking at what they did last year. And I'd also just wanna make sure that we, we're looking at a, a new bond, surety, you know, because that one that's in there is
Is last year's.
Is last year's, so I think maybe if they could just do that stuff in time for next week's, next meeting, then I'd be cool with it.
I think we also have asked to break out what work has been completed, needs to be done.
That's drainage, that's not paving. This is, this is just the guy that the thing that actually melt the roads and.
Did we have any issues with their work thus far? We did not.
They have.
Okay.
Uh, the company before them was a, was, was less than. But it's to the point where they were supposed to put four inches of material down and we found them putting one inch of material down. And it's like, that's how roads don't last, right? So you wanted to scope the shorting. And who else?
That's it. This year's scope and surety.
Could you make sure that the that the the extension is clear, maybe as town attorney or
I did.
Make, make sure the extension is clear as to all of the terms, because a lot of the contract relates to twenty twenty two stuff. It's kinda like what Alan is talking about, making sure that the bond applies, but that the, all the terms remain in effect, even though there's some references to twenty twenty three.
I, I did ask that question, but I could, I'll get clarity again.
This is a big bond section and it's payment restoration twenty twenty two section. Or we wanna have a payment restoration point in the fourth section, or at least have, be sure that the that the contract extension provides that it would be a, assume that to be a twenty twenty four payment restoration provision.
All right, anything else on this? That I will get clarity for the next meeting. I have a motion to postpone that.
Motion to postpone the Andrick paving contract extension.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And then I'd like to table nine B until after executive session.
Move to table nine B until after executive session.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? All right, on May fourteenth.
Through the tax refunds?
Oh.
I'm going to approve the tax refunds totaling twenty-three dollars and fourteen cents.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I don't even have anywhere to beat. All right, on May fourteenth, the town and the Board of Education budget proposals as recommended by the Board of Finance will go to voters for consideration at the annual budget referendum. Polls are gonna be open from six AM to eight PM at all the usual voting locations. Initial budgetary requests from all departments and agencies of the town representing a, a spending increase of twelve point six five percent over this year's budget. My budget recommendation reduced that number down to three point ninety percent. And after collaboration amongst the board of selectmen, the recommendation for the town government budget was reduced to two point three six percent, which was approved by the Board of Finance. The superintendent of school requested a budget increase of five point four five percent, which was decreased by the Board of Ed to four point seven five percent and ultimately improved by the Board of Finance at three point two percent. The overall budget proposal recommended by the Board of Finance is a spending increase of two point eight five percent over the current year's budget and requires an increase in the local tax levy of point four seven percent. The budget put forward by the Board of Finance includes funding for a new police officer to serve as a community services officer, officer within the police department, training funds for live action emergency management training, including all emergency services departments, increased staffing for the registrars of voters to implement early voting as required by state law, and increased costs associated with emergency medical dispatching services. Proposal also makes significant reductions in employee benefits, restructured compensation structures for the police administration and emergency management, and lower funding for non-negotiated wages. On April ninth, Chief Carl, Deputy Chief Murphy and I met with Representative Foster and Representative Ron Napoli of Waterbury to try and secure state bond funds for the replacement of East Windsor's emergency radio system. All right, our existing system is nearly twenty years old, is no longer supported and replacement parts are no longer available. This is a critical piece of infrastructure that supports our police department, our fire departments, our ambulance service, our public schools, public works, and the senior center. It's absolutely critical that a solution be found in the system and we appreciate the help of our, our state representative on this initiative so far. More to come on this hopefully very soon. Yesterday, I was pleased to join the East Windsor Police Department as their two newest officers were sworn in, including the first father-son tandem in the department's history. Lieutenant Poliquin's son Hunter was just sworn in as a police officer and he and the other new recruit will start the police academy at the end of the month. That paired with a comparative compliance recruit from the city of Springfield, starting later this month, will bring the department up to full staff. We're already seeing the benefit of that. The, the payroll submissions from the police department for the last two pay cycles have shown their overtime bill cut in half. Which is what you would expect to see when you're at full staff, but we haven't been there in, in quite a while, so good, good things happening there. I wanna congratulate Broadbrook Fire Department Deputy Chief Jim Bancroft. Jim is a career firefighter in Hartford and today he was officially promoted to the rank of district chief in the city of Hartford, so congratulations Chief Bancroft and well deserved. The date has been set for the groundbreaking ceremony for the community center project. You're gonna get a formal invitation probably next week. The event will be held at one PM on May sixth at Scout Hall. Senator Blumenthal is confirmed to be attending and all are welcome to that. Finally, Planet Conservation and Development Community Survey is open. A crucial step in revising our plan of conservation and development is taking the pulse of the community and responses to this community survey will greatly assist the Planning and Zoning Commission in setting the vision and goals for East Windsor for the next ten years. A link to that survey can be found on the P, in the P O C D update located on the Planning and Zoning Commission's webpage and it could also be found right on the front page of, of the town's website. That's all I have. Great.
Yeah, I don't have a report to say. I mean, you wanna apologize since you're into all of the liaison positions that I've been working over the last month and a half but due to personal issues. Just not gonna do it with them, so.
I understand.
Now, I'm gonna hold my report till next one, because I only had planning and zoning and they didn't have really much going on.
All right. Sir?
Okay, April ninth, I attended the Warehouse Point Fire District's budget public hearing and meeting. The proposed fiscal year twenty twenty four, twenty twenty five budget is one million, three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, twelve dollars and fifty-four cents. The current mill rate is two point three, but due to an increase in the grand list, the proposed mill rate would be one point eight. A vote on the proposed budget will be held on May sixth at seven PM at Station One at eighty-nine Bridge Street. There were sixty-five fire calls in the month of March and at this time, one hundred and twenty-six out of one hundred and ninety-one inspections have been completed in this fiscal year. The Board of Education met on April tenth. There were twenty-two entries in the limerick contest this year and the three winners from the school district were announced. Each received a gift card to Frankie B's Bakery, which is a new establishment here in town. Congratulations to Abigail Starvish, Violet Stevenson, and Christina Keys. There was a curriculum update given by high school teacher Mike Mosher on a new course he's teaching called Sustainable Agriculture. There are currently twenty-four eleventh and twelfth graders enrolled in this one semester course. The goal of the course is to offer students the chance to understand food production, social inequalities and access to food and to learn how to cultivate their own. With a grant, a greenhouse was purchased and it is set up in the courtyard where students have been planting microgreens and seeds for outdoor crops. What's really cool is they've actually passed on some of the items they've grown to the culinary class to cook with. There was some discussion regarding some of the Board of Finance cuts to the Board of Education budget and some brainstorming on how to handle this after the May fourteenth referendum vote. I attended the Veterans Commission meeting on April eleventh. The group is still accepting orders for pavers in memory of a loved one at the Joseph Tracy Veterans Memorial Green. Each paver is six by nine and the cost is fifty dollars. If you're interested, please contact Chairman James Barton at djbarton22@gmail.com. And they were working on finishing up planning for Memorial, the Memorial Day Parade and then brainstorming for Veterans Day Road Race and Reeds Across America happening later this year. Yesterday, I met with Police Chief Matt Carl and Quinise Jones, who is the Town of East Windsor's new Y S B Prevention and Program Coordinator. I'd like to thank Chief Carl for his leadership and work on the Youth Service Bureau over the past few years. He's been an instrumental part of keeping things together and maintaining our funding and our status. We discussed potential programs, reporting the necessary data and future steps to get the Juvenile Review Board up and running, running again. I'd like to welcome Quinise to town and I look forward to working with her. Just a reminder, there is the open mic night put on by the Arts and Culture Committee on April twenty seventh at the Trolley Museum from six to eight PM. And then Gavin's whole makeover will be at the Firehouse in Warehouse Point on the twenty-eighth. There's three seedings. And also the police department is holding their annual tip a cop event at the main fish market on May first from four to eight. One hundred percent of the proceeds will benefit the Connecticut Special Olympics. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Keith.
Um, thank you.
One thing that I, I, I would be remiss not to make note of, and it's not good news, but for anybody who may have known him, Steve Noel was a part-time employee at Public Works for quite a while and was probably the happiest, nicest guy you've met. He passed away today after a battle with cancer. And he was, he was not quite sixty. He was incredibly nice guy and our thoughts are with him and his family. All of participation. Is there, is there any, are there any members of the public who'd like to address? Yes, sir. Name and address.
Paul Anderson, eighty-nine Main Street. I just wanna make a public statement about Public Works. I think they deserve recognition for some of the guardrails, the new guardrails that have been put up in town and some incredible spaces where they are well deserved to be there. And I think they've done an excellent job.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Yes, sir. Name and address, please.
Yes, Wayne Cherry. You must be Robert. I just for point of clarity and interest, both. The materials for wonder, materials for something, do they do just like chop the stuff out of it all and put a new road there in there or the thing that wants to put this and crush stone down in the car?
Chip ceiling?
Yeah.
We don't really do the chip ceiling anymore. We've gotten away from that in the last five or seven years. I'm sure Andrick would do it if we asked them to, but that's not part of the.
What, what, what are they doing actually? Like digging the roads like they do in the highways and puts a new bed down?
That's the plan for whopping road, about a little over a mile, whopping road is gonna be. Uh, that's the plan for whopping road about a little over a mile, whopping road is gonna be called reclaimed. Uh, they're gonna take it down to the base. Level it, put the the uh layers in that they need to, and it'll be a brand new.
But isn't everything that they used, or they put the remains that they dug out in there and then back down?
Talking about.
Little extension on East Road where it's all.
Right, or extension?
Excuse me.
Oh, no, you're probably not over in uh, uh, yeah, it, well, that's, that's. No, that's still considered an unimproved road. We get certain town aid road dollars for that.
Do they put the grounds down there though, or is it a mess? Would they grind on the road? Road grinds, we're gonna call them.
Uh, Millings. Well, we do, actually, there's, if you go to the Public Works garage, there's a very large pile of Millings right now. That's, we store, we store them there, and then we reapply them on places like.
Yeah, that worked pretty good, because like I travel that road all the time. And now it's getting less bumpy. That's it.
Yes, sir. Name and address.
Tom Buckley, Kings Court, Rod Brook. Curious question, you were talking about the contractors or they have papers that were doing some roads. Are the ones that did Amelia Road, are you still contracting them?
I don't know who did Amelia Road, but we changed the contractor last year to this company.
Have you been on that road lately?
Yeah.
There's two big sections. That shouldn't have ever happened. That road's only two years old.
That's the company that we got rid of. Uh, and that's one of the reasons why we got rid of them.
I go over that every day and look at it, and it gives me heartburn to see that road ruptured in two places like that. It's really serious. I don't know how they're gonna fix it. They're gonna have to go down and regrade it or. What they're gonna do to fix it. It's just patching it, it's not gonna, it's not gonna hold.
No.
They proved that this winter.
When you, when you find a company that does the job well, you want to maintain that relationship, um, and. We will get to that.
Okay. But they are gonna do something about that road if they're gonna try to.
Amelia?
Yeah. I'll talk to Sarah Alford about that.
Talk to what?
Needs to be fixed, it's bad. It's not gonna stay, it's just gonna keep continuing to come apart. Well, it was giving the road, it's gotta. That is the king of the road. All right.
Any other comments? Anyone online? Okay, uh, we will have an executive session. It will include just the five members of Board of Selectmen. Um, I'm gonna say action will follow, but I'm not sure of that. Then motion to go to executive session.
A move that we go into executive session at seven thirty three.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Then.
Opposed? We are in executive session.
That's anybody.
It's uh, eight oh seven, I'm gonna call the meetings, uh, the Board of Selectmen back to order. We are out of executive session. Um, it's our last item of business being um, agenda item nine B, discussion and possible vote on the backer truck purchase offer from the W P C A. Is there a motion?
Motion to postpone item nine B for the next release schedule meeting.
Second, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? There any further business to come before the Board of Selectmen? Hearing none, a motion to adjourn would be in order.
Move that we adjourn at eight oh eight PM.
There a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Or adjourn at eight oh eight PM?